Tammy. Thank you very much. Good evening and welcome. We are recording tonight's forum. This virtual forum is sponsored by the Nonpartisan League of Women Voters of Washington, Clickatet and Skamania Counties at Large Group, and the Columbia Gorge News. We are speaking tonight with the candidates for the White Salmon School Board, Billy Gross, Pat Dempsey, and Peter Harkema. Andrew Maris could not attend this evening, and he has been invited to submit a video statement. We will share that video on the Clickatet, Skamania League of Women Voters Facebook page as soon as we receive it. The candidates did not receive our questions in advance. Some of the questions were written by the sponsoring organizations, and some were submitted by the public in advance of tonight's forum. All questions have been vetted for bias, bias and accuracy by the sponsors. Candidates have agreed to stay on topic and will have 60 seconds to respond to each question. We will alternate which candidate answers first, and I will repeat the question to each candidate. We will have a timekeeper visual for all participants. The timekeeper screen will go yellow when there is 15 seconds remaining, and it will go red when time is up. If necessary, I will interrupt a candidate to complete their sentence and discontinue their answer once the allotted time has been exceeded. The order of the candidates tonight will be in the order of the candidates on our ballots. Billy Gross will go first, followed by Pat Dempsey, and then Peter Harkema. So that we all can focus on the candidates during the forum, the chat section has been disabled, and we ask all viewers to remain muted. If you have any questions, please email the Legal Women Voters at the address on your screen, l w v k s at l w v w a dot org. This forum is an opportunity for candidates to present their views and positions so that you, the voter, can make a more informed decision when you mark your ballot. Please make sure that you are registered to vote. You can do so online at vote four one one dot org or at an elections office near you. And now to get to our forum. My name is Tammy Kaufman, and I will be tonight's moderator. Welcome to our candidates this evening. Billy Gross.
Oh.
Dempsey. And Peter Harkema.
Hello.
The candidates have our ground rules for tonight's forum in advance, and they have agreed to abide by them. So now we will hear from each of our candidates for a 90-second introduction. Mr. Gross, please tell us a little bit about yourself and why you are running for office.
My story is fairly simple. Third-generation white salmon graduate. Graduated '93, been involved in several community activities. So, and I got two kids in school right now, so I thought it was a great time to step up as an active member of the community and be part of the school board. I've been an active member for a year and a half now, be two years in January. Enjoyed every minute of it. Involved with several community activities with community youth. So just like being involved in the community and helping out where I can. So, and once again, my name is Billy Gross.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. And now we'll move to Ms. Dempsey. Please tell us a little bit about yourself and why you are running for office.
Um, I'm a longtime educator. I kind of grew up in the field of education in the White Salmon School District. Many, many different roles that I played, and it's kind of exciting now that I'm, I have retired. I'm, I'm just sort of looking to come back and, and to sort of add to, add to the running of the, you know, the, the schools and to support teachers and parents who are going through, you know, the, the last couple of years have been a little bit rough on schools and getting things going. I think I have a lot of, had a lot of experience and that kind of thing. Kind of my, you know, personal story, I always wanted to be a teacher, and it just when you go away from it, you come back and you think, wow, kind of missed that, missed that opportunity to, to be part of a learning community, both with teachers and to, and to really, you know, support to school, students in their learning. So I'm, I'm excited about the opportunity to come back and, and be part of the community again.
Thank you, Ms. Dempsey. And now, Mr. Harkema, please tell us a little bit about yourself and why you are running for office.
Yeah, thanks for the opportunity. Peter Harkema, I live in Underwood and have three kiddos, eight to three. And, you know, that's probably the, the primary reason that, the, the first reason that I decided to run for, you know, this, this position. And, you know, the other reason is, I think my, my professional background really kind of aligns with maybe some of the needs within the district and the board. I'm a public policy mediator, run a program, I direct a program that deals with community issues and resolving challenging topics at the community level and bringing people together to align different positions and move forward on challenging topics. And, you know, Pat, as you said, it's been a difficult couple of years. And, you know, I think for families and, and parents, for students, certainly, for teachers, and, you know, the community at large, potentially polarizing. And I think, you know, my hope would be to help bring folks together. And that's, that's sort of what motivated me. And as a parent and community member, it's a nice way to be able to offer my services and be able to hope, hopefully help, help serve. So that's why I'm here.
Thank you, Mr. Harkema. Now we'll move, move on to our questions. Each candidate will have 60 seconds to answer. So we will begin with Ms. Dempsey. What do you see as the major challenges facing the White Salmon School District in the coming years?
I think the, you know, certainly getting back, back into a motion again be because of the interruption of students and getting back into the destruction. But I think adult school has always been in a, you know, in a moment to, in a movement to be, you know, looking at the individual needs of kids and to inspire them to, you know, move on to, you know, a career and a life outside of school. Education is one of those things that it, you know, we, we all have been through school, and we all look, remember, you know, who, who inspired us. And, and I think it'd be important to look at, you know, the individual parts of kids. I particularly think, you know, working towards, you know, more vocational, you know, career and technical education is really what kind of inspires each of the kids to, you know, use their education, to use their learning. And there's a very, you know, a very, an art and a science to teaching. So if we could, you know, spend our, spend the time trying to, you know,
Ms. Dempsey, if you could wrap up.
Okay, if we could get back to, you know, having kids being working together and, and learning, I think it's, you know, it's really a benefit to the community.
Thank you, Ms. Dempsey. Next, we'll move to Mr. Harkema. What do you see as the major challenges facing the White Salmon School District in the coming years?
Yeah, I think, I think one of the primary challenges probably for White Salmon District, as well as many districts, is, is fiscal sort of stability in an era that there's a lot of uncertainty in terms of state budgets, federal budgets, et cetera. So I think that would be a primary one for me. I think it's a time and, and season of transition for the district in particular because of leadership changes. You've got new principals, a new superintendent, and I think integrating and carving a future and a vision that integrates those, those new leaders and holds to some of the traditional values and, and stability the district's always had is an important one. And then I think increasing diversity within, within the district and how we meet the needs of, of a diverse student body most effectively in diversity, both in terms of sort of racial and ethnic diversity, but also the needs of, of students that are going to advance to, you know, post-secondary education and those that are maybe moving to vocational, on a vocational track.
Thank you, Mr. Harkema. Now we'll move to Mr. Gross. What do you see as the major challenges facing the White Salmon School District in coming years?
Um, well, being part of the board, I understand that the upcoming adversities will be the financial part. We're down a significant amount of students for FTE. So budgeting will be a big one. As far as diversity, we can't really diversify our school because it's whoever signs up for the school is in the school. It's just giving them the tools and ability to learn and excel with other students is the major thing. I think the school's done a great job with what they've done with that through the past few years. And so, yeah, keeping kids in school is the main thing right now. And then getting kids back. So that's the main diversities coming up, main challenges.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. Mr. Harkema, we'll move on to our next question. Is there a particular issue that motivates you to serve on the school board?
Yeah, I suppose I wouldn't use the word issue. I think, you know, as a board member, I wouldn't enter with an agenda. I think the primary driver for me would be a spirit of service and wanting to serve the community and, and fundamentally support, you know, the district leadership, the teachers, the staff in really delivering really effective educational services to our students. And, and so there are lots of challenges, as I, I mentioned in the, in the, the previous question. But I think my primary motivation is, is not to overcome a particular adversity, but really to be responsive to the needs of, of the district and of the, the student body, the faculty body, and, and the leadership. And so I'd be a listener primarily.
Thank you, Mr. Harkema. Mr. Gross, is there a particular issue that motivates you to serve on the school board?
Um, yeah, kids, number one. Getting the best education for the kids is my number one. Second would be taxpayer dollars going to the right places to benefit the kids that are getting taught. So it's like, it's a checkpoint between principals and teachers and superintendents. It's kind of a, well, if you call it a piano type of work, but it starts with the superintendent down to the principals, to the students, getting them the best education for what they can get. So students are number one to me.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. And Ms. Dempsey, is there a particular issue that motivates you to serve on the school board?
Yeah, I think I'll, I'll go back to the, kind of the vocational education portion of, of the district. I think motivating children to, you know, to achieve the standards that I've set up, that we, you know, we, we give them experiences in the, in the, all throughout the years to, you know, kind of be able to take care of themselves. You know, it seems to be, I would like to see, you know, the, the idea of, you know, we have community college credit that is available to, for academic reasons for people that are going on. I'd also like to see, and I know there is via the E S D and, and the Washington, in Washington Career Connected Learning that the district is involved in, that they're, we're looking at trying to, you know, bring education or apprenticeship programs and licensing programs and, you know, help the, to develop a, you know, kind of a lifelong kind of learning to always be in kind of improving your skills. And I think, you know, it's, the superintendent already sits on that in the local area, so I think.
Dempsey, if you can wrap up, please.
That it would bring, you know, it would bring, you know, community support as well. That we could use apprentice and take advantage of the community that we have to offer apprenticeships and.
Thank you, Ms. Dempsey. We'll move on to our next question. We'll begin with Mr. Gross. What experiences have you, have prepared you to serve as a school board member?
Wow, good question. Yeah, growing up through the school district, learning the teachers, respecting some of the teachers, admiring some of the teachers, looking back on my experiences in high school, what they've taught me has followed me through my life. So, and teaching kids in Little League and seeing the kids grow up doing the same and going through the school district kind of wants me to give back to the community more than what I did before, I guess. So it's just my experiences as far as teaching kids and having people teach me growing up. So it's kind of like a big circle in life, so.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. And we'll move to Mr. Harkema. I'm sorry, next up is Ms. Dempsey. Ms. Dempsey, what experiences have prepared you to serve as a school board member?
Well, it's, you know, a lot, you know, I've spent a lot of years in, in the White Salmon District, and I really, when you retire, you realize how much you really miss being around children. Have, helping to see them grow and learn and appreciate, you know, the, the inspiration that some teachers give to them. I've worked with teachers, you know, as a supervisor for teacher, I was a vice principal. So I've worked with administration and you, that team of, that team approach to helping children to, to learn and grow and move out. You run, I run into some of my students in town sometimes, and it just kind of brings you back to, just that being part of their experience. It really does a lot for you. And so I, I feel like I, you know, I have a handle on, you know, the process of teaching and that kind of thing to be able to help. And also just like to see, you know, be, be, be a, a part of a team of people who are looking out for and looking for the best for kids in our community.
Thank you, Ms. Dempsey. Mr. Harkema, what experiences have prepared you to serve as a school board member?
Yeah, I, I mentioned in the, at the outset here to this evening that I, my current professional experience is, is relevant to the, the board position because I, I work with public bodies, I work with communities and, and bringing diverse parties together to, to reach alignment on difficult issues, which I think often a board is doing, whether it's with the community itself or with different leaders or the fact, you know, the staff and supporting them in different mechanisms. As a program director, I, you know, run a budget, the program budget of over a million dollars and then many project budgets that are tens of thousands or hundreds of thousands of dollars. And so I have some fiscal experience that I think could be pertinent to the, to the board position and, you know, a, a long history of service, volunteer, volunteer work and serving communities.
Thank you, Mr. Harkema. For our next question, in today's information age, much of our nonfiction informational reading is done online. This is true for students as well for adults. So our question, and we'll begin with Ms. Dempsey, is what is your perspective on the role of digital literacy education?
Well, it is a, you know, a necessary skill for, you know, doing everything. So it's, we really do need to, and it, it gives many children an opportunity to, you know, express themselves in, in, in that format. The technical training for many jobs, you know, comes from work that they do in school. It's, um, it, it is, you know, it's that personal approach that, you know, certainly many of the teachers had to go through when they were, during this COVID time, where you have to really kind of gain, you know, gain the attention and keep, keep kids going with it. But it's, you know, it's a necessary part of education these days. And if you want to go on to further education, a lot of that work has to be done. It's, 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 kids need to be supported in that. Not everybody can, you know, is, is, has access to that. So we're sure that people have access to that information. But it certainly is a, you know, a part of our society these days.
Thank you, Ms. Dempsey. Next, we'll move to Mr. Harkema. What is your perspective on the role of digital literacy education?
Um, well, I suppose my view on it is it's a, it's a tool, not an answer. It's, a, a, as Pat just said, it's, it's a critical part of, of how society operates right now and, and will into the future. So for students to learn via digital platforms is probably a really, really important skill. But so are other skills, interfacing and interacting with the rest of the student body. Yeah, from a literacy perspective, being able to utilize different tools, some of those traditional and some of those new digital platforms are, are important. And each of those will be important in terms of educating, and I think fundamentally well-rounded students, whether that's in literacy or other elements of their educational experience. I think we need to strive to have and cultivate well-rounded students throughout all of the way they, all of the ways that they learn, including literacy.
Thank you, Mr. Harkema. And Mr. Gross, what is your perspective on the role of digital literacy education?
Well, I've turned to 180 since I've been on the board. I used to never believe in computers or never liked computers, had the same home numbers ever since I was graduated high school. But it's definitely a stepping stone for kids and teachers. It's definitely going to be a positive tool in the future for students to learn, teachers to get a hold of students that I've seen. I've learned so much about Zoom meetings and what a person can do. So I think it's definitely going to be a great tool in the future to use properly, especially if we have to go remote again. I think we're prepared for it. All the kids have had Chromebooks that we've handed out in the past. So we, school still has those. So I think a lot of students are getting the opportunity to get it. And we've also reached out to places to get internet service to everybody or sites that people can go to, since being on the board. So I think it's a great tool.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. Moving on to our next question, we'll begin with Mr. Harkema. What kind of relationship should the school district and the school board have with its community? And what can you do as a board member to foster that relationship?
I suppose the, the first word that comes to mind is transparent or a transparent relationship with the community. I think we should be reflective of the community and, and transparent in terms of decision-making, open in terms of communication. And, and also I think the posture of, of one of, of, of listeners, right? That, that now there'll be a small number of people that are, are working to channel a lot of different perspectives on what should or shouldn't happen, how best to serve a diverse student body. And I think that involves listening to the community and trying to do best by the community and reflect their desires and views in terms of how policies and decisions are made. So one of transparency and, and listening.
Thank you, Mr. Harkema. Mr. Gross, what kind of relationship should the school district and the school board have with its community? And what can you do as a board member to foster that relationship?
Um, yeah, well, with my work, I'm out in the community a lot, talk to a lot of people, have a lot of friends. Like I said, obviously, I've lived here for my whole life, know a lot of people. Obviously, there's new people moving in there, I don't know. But I, I talked to a lot of people, a lot of people reach out to me and talk to me or give me a call if they have concerns. Best thing to do is listen and don't take any personal agendas on the board and make the best decisions you can for the students and the public out there. So that's my best answer on that one.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. Ms. Dempsey, what kind of relationship should the school district and the school board have with its community? And what can you do as a school board member to foster that relationship?
Well, it is really a partnership that we have with parents, you know, in, in, in being part of the school district. We both, we share the same needs in terms of wanting to make sure that our kids are in a good, are in a good, having a good education and getting it, getting in a, in a good relationships with teachers in there. We have different roles that we play, you know, but we have definitely need to work together in terms of, we, we support children in, in different ways, you know, both as a teacher and as a, a, a parent. You're working towards the same thing, but you're, so as a school board, you're, you're a school board member, you're just, you know, balancing that support that goes through on both sides. It recognizes that parents and families can struggle, parents and families can have, you know, want to have the, their child be able to, to have a successful relationship with the teachers in school. So you work on, you know, commenting all of that and keeping the communication, as our other members have said, keep the communication open.
Thank you, Ms. Dempsey. We'll move to our next question and begin with Mr. Gross. How do you feel the district has handled the COVID-19 public health challenge?
It was a difficult one at first. Obviously, brand new to everybody. You kind of try to follow the guidelines that were handed down by the state. My main concern being on the board was getting kids back in school. But you had to follow the guidelines ended by the school nurse and the state. So getting back to school, I was, I was hoping for the school to get back in person a little bit sooner than they did. But we had peaks and numbers a couple of different times that re-circus from getting back. So all in all, I, I want to say the school did the best it could to get them back as fast as we could. I'd like to see them get back a little quicker, but we did what we did. We got kids back in January. So, yeah, it was, it was a learning curve. Nobody knew what was coming, so did the best we could.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. Next, we'll move to Ms. Dempsey. How do you feel the district handled the COVID-19 public health challenge?
Well, I think again, yes, it was quite the challenge to be able to, to get everyone back. But I, I think they did, you know, I think the, the mandates that come down or the, you know, the suggestions that come down that, from health, health officials and from our, our leaders in Olympia. I think, you know, you, you, you deal with that as you can. It isn't, it is, it was difficult on teachers. It was difficult for children not to be able to be in school. But I think you, what has occurred is the, you know, the, the right thing that was done. We seem to be back, be able to be back as we were able to with, without, you know, much of a, you know, having to come and go and have things break out again. We, teachers were, you know, receptive and, and, you know, had to, had to change quite a bit in order to make sure that the education got out there. You know, there is, yeah, certainly was not, you know, ideal, but I, I think they did a good job.
And we'll move to Mr. Harkema. How do you feel the district has handled the COVID-19 public health challenge?
I think overall, the district has handled it remarkably well. As Billy said, there was no, no plan, right, in place for how to deal with this. It was just coming at them. And I think the district overall has proved pretty responsive and reactive to changing dynamics, shifting guidelines, done a good job of following the guidelines, supporting teachers. And, and teachers have done a good job, you know, as a parent, watching my kids, you know, interface with their, their teachers over the last year and, and how that changed from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. And, you know, I saw evolution and, and learning happening in terms of both students learning as well as teachers learning how to deliver the services in a shifting environment. Bill, you also mentioned, I think, providing access to students that didn't have broadband access and looking for ways to, to do that. And I think those were really important and spoke well of the district in the way it handled this.
Thank you, Mr. Harkema. Ms. Dempsey, we'll move to you with our next question. What is your vision for education in this community?
Well, I, for it to, you know, I really have that feeling that it should be, it's really about learning, you know, and lifelong learning is really important. I think in, in identifying what the needs and the needs of each child that kind of individually is also important to inspire them to want to learn and to do better, bring out what they, their own, their own interests and their own talents, that those should be welcomed and, and encouraged. I, you want to see success, or, you know, I think it's kind of the school is sort of the heart of the community. And so you want to see all your children do, all the kids do well. You know, I think we, we have an, an opportunity to, again, to work with the local community too and sort of expanding that beyond the school walls to more practical, you know, education, to more, you know, hands-on kind of thing to, you know, have kids explore different careers.
Thank you, Ms. Dempsey, if you could conclude.
That I, you know, I, education is a lifelong thing. And so we really want to spark that curiosity in it for learning.
Thank you, Ms. Dempsey. Mr. Harkema, what is your vision for education in this community?
I think it's, it's one of, you know, a number of things. One, a, a system of education that, that serves all of our students and the different ways that they learn, the different career tracks that they may take and educational tracks they may take once they leave the district. And one that's, I think, continuously improving. One that, that feels vibrant and alive, that embraces innovation and new opportunities that, in, in that. and new opportunities that, in that both truly reflects the community and what it is, as well as looks outside of its borders to learn from what other districts like ours are doing and how their, what their best successes are and what the challenges they're facing and what hasn't gone well, and how do we learn those lessons and apply them for White Salmon?
Thank you, Mr. Harkema. And Mr. Gross, what is your vision for education in this community?
My future vision, I guess, would be the standards should still stay the standards of what you're taught. Definitely, education evolves as far as what needs to be taught, but different ways to teach your kids. Everything's moving and growing with technology. Obviously, we learned about that. But, yeah, involving the community, getting the community's trust back. We're down 100 and some students right now. So it'd be nice to get those students back in school and in the public and have everything that we have to offer for them. It's a challenge. Coming in the future, the next couple of years is going to be a big challenge with budget and students need to get them back and give them the best education that we can. But like I said, staples still need to stay the staples as far as what needs to be taught and just learn how to evolve with what's coming up in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. Mr. Harkema, we'll start with you for our final question of the evening. As a school board member, in what areas of the budget would you consider making cuts if necessary? What budget items would you protect from proposed cuts?
Well, I think, though going into the specifics of it, I think, you know, the fundamental question to ask in the situation of cutting is what are the core services? And fundamentally, it's how do you make sure, I suppose, students are going to be able to continue to be educated in the most effective, most, yeah, effective and efficient manner possible, given the constraints of a budget circumstance. And so I think, sort of thinking about it in terms of what are the criteria through which you're going to make cuts, and that would be a primary one for me. And there may be opportunities to sort of think about scaling back programs or other services, but not constraining the fundamentals of delivering educational services to students. And that needs to remain the core of any district that's going to thrive into the future, even in a time of disparity and short.
Thank you, Mr. Harkema. Mr. Gross, as a school board member, in what areas of the budget would you consider making cuts if necessary? And what budget items would you protect from proposed cuts?
Well, we don't want to make cuts. We want to give the kids all we can. But obviously, you have a budget. And being part of the board now, knowing how far we're down in budget, it's going to be a tough one. You definitely want to keep all your ELL classes, all your special classes, all your classes to help kids out, quality and all that. It's going to be a tough question to answer. It's just something that you're going to have to deal with when it comes. I really don't want to say what I feel like cutting because I don't feel like cutting anything right now. So I think we got a great program going. It's just, it depends where the budget's going to be at, when we need to do it, on what needs cut, I feel.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. And Ms. Dempsey, as a school board member, in what areas of the budget would you consider making cuts if necessary? And what budget items would you protect from proposed cuts?
Yes, like the former members here, you can't, it is hard to make those things. What do you pull out? Everything is important and White Salmon has always had to, you know, kind of work around those kind of things. Sometimes you have to get creative in what other movements you can get from different grants situations or different support from, you know, your educational foundation and things like that. Because you only can, you know, go across and shrink so much without really having to, you know, cut back a little bit, but to still keep the integrity of, you know, you don't want to cut staffing, you don't want to remove services. You want to get creative a little bit in trying to shift monies around and use what state and federal monies you can do. But, you know, there's never an easy, that's never an easy decision, I'm sure, for a school board to make. You have to maintain the educational integrity.
Thank you, Ms. Dempsey. That concludes our questions for the evening. And now each of our candidates will have 30 seconds to close. They can use this time to clarify anything that was said during the forum. We'll begin with Mr. Gross. Mr. Gross, you have 30 seconds.
I was just actually looking at 10, it looked like there was 19 of them. So I'd like to thank all of them for showing up. I would like to thank you guys making the effort to make this happen. So, thanks for inviting me. Just trying to do the best for my kids. So that's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. Now, Ms. Harkema, you have 30 seconds to close. I'm sorry, Ms. Dempsey, apologize.
Well, just my, again, yes, also thank you. It's good to have an opportunity to speak and to speak out what I feel. It's always been, you know, I've always wanted to be, you know, my passion is to be around students and to be, this is what I wanted to be when I grew up, is to be part of a school system. And so I'm excited to be back, be thinking about being back and being part of the community of learners. It's something we all inspire, we're all inspired to do, and it's nice to be a part of moving our kids forward. It's a necessary part of our community and I'm really happy to be part of all that.
Thank you, Ms. Dempsey. And Mr. Harkema, if you could round us out this evening, you have 30 seconds to close.
Yeah, so I'd say thanks to those that listened in and were engaged and to the league for putting on tonight's event. I'd also say thanks to Billy and Pat and Andy also for throwing their hats in the ring. You know, it's a service thing and, you know, volunteer thing. So everybody, I think, ultimately wants to contribute to the community, so I appreciate y'all. And, yeah, I look forward to seeing how this goes and appreciate everybody's time this evening.
Thank you very much. That concludes our content for this evening. On behalf of the League of Women Voters, we thank all of our candidates tonight for joining us. Thank you all. Tonight's recorded coverage will be available on YouTube and on the Legal Women Voters Facebook page. Be sure to head to vote411.org if you need any other information. And please remember to mark your ballot and return it in time to be counted for the general election on November 2nd. Thank you all and good evening.